Yes, Mayor Brown.
Yes. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Council, we are going to have a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed annual action plan for our HUD funds for the evening. Renee Farrell is here to address that.
Thank you, sir. I would ask that you stand there, and that way when we open up for public comments, you'll be in position.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Can you hear me? Today, we are here to provide the proposed recommendations for the city's annual action plan through HUD funds. I'd like to start off with our requirement of the CDBG administration at a 20% cap. The city proposes to provide $290,143 to both CDBG program administration and Fair Housing Services. The 15% cap, which is recommended by the City of Compton's Federal Grants Advisory Board, is broken down as follows. Champions of Caring Literacy Program at $10,000. El Nido Family Centers Youth Development at $15,000. Legal Aid Society of Orange County Domestic Violence Prevention Program at $19,871. Haven Services at $19,500. Angels For Sight $20,000. ARC Mid-Cities $18,236. The Children's Clinic Medical Care Service $50,000. And the City of Compton's Park and Recreation Programs at $65,000. For a total of $217,607 in public service funding. For CDBG non-public service activities, they include the following. City of Compton Park Improvement at $187,521. City of Compton Code Enforcement Department at $149,103. The Fire Department for a fire engine at $550,000. The City of Compton Building and Safety Department at $40,668,000. And the Section 8 loan repayment at $15,675,000. For a total of $942,967,000. For the grand total for CDBG of $1,450,717,000. Now, I'd like to go into the 2017-18 home investment partnership allocation for a 10% administration cost at $41,527,000. Chodo Activity, which is a 15% requirement, at $62,291,000. And for the home activity this year, First Time Home Buyer Program at $311,457,000. For a total of $415,275,000. This concludes the recommendations that the city would like to provide to HUD this year.
Thank you. We will now open the floor for public comments. May you proceed forward. And because this is a public hearing, we are asking that you restrict your commentary only to the item presented. You'll have an opportunity for general public comments at the time of public comments. So the floor is open. Yes, sir. If you can proceed to the podium and state your name for the record.
I don't know if I'm the only person that doesn't know what CHDO means, like... What is that? What is that? I don't even know what that is. CHDO project?
CHDO is Community Housing Development Organization. And as a requirement by HUD, we are required to provide funding to an individual who meets that criteria in order to provide housing for residents in the City of Compton.
Okay, and then, under CDBG program activities, could you break down what these are? Like Champions of Caring Literacy Program, that's pretty self-explanatory, but who is that targeted for?
Say it again, who is it targeted for? They deal with the homeless population here in the city. They actually go to the motels and things of that nature to help children to be able to read. A lot of times, they're not able to get out to the libraries, or they might need additional help that the school can't provide, so they do that for them.
And the El Nido Family Centers Youth Development?
They deal with the at-risk youth.
Does that mean something? What does that mean, El Nido?
That's the name of their organization.
Legal Aid Society, is that OC of Orange County? Is that for OC for Orange County?
That's the name of the organization. However, they have two locations here in the city. One on Rosecrans and one here located at the courthouse, and they handle domestic violence restraining orders.
And then Haven Services?
Haven Services is a senior service program. I do believe it's a senior service program. I apologize.
Okay, and that provides?
Say it again.
Oh, I was trying to figure out, what did that provide for senior citizens?
Sorry, I apologize. It's homeless support services.
What do they do for the homeless?
They're going to provide various... They're like, they are the organization that the homeless will go to in order to receive various assistance. So they will be the person who will guide them, to help them, to connect to SSI. Provide, I don't know if it's an EBT card or...
So they help them navigate the system, access their benefits.
Right, the benefit program.
And then Angels For Sight?
They provide vision care to seniors, youth, disabled, and veterans.
ARC Mid-Cities?
Services for the disabled. So they'll also be able to be that individual, that location that a person can go to to get assistance, to provide all the necessary support services.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public? Mr. Ray?
Just one quick question. Do CDBG funds, you've already received them?
No, we didn't. We have not. This is just to provide you, we've received the allocation amount. We have not received the cash in hand.
Did you know our dear President is threatening to stop all CDBG funding?
Lynn Boone, City of Compton. First, I want to ask the City Council, are you aware of the requirements for the city as far as the participants? I went to Jay, and I went to the city clerk. The city clerk called to the grants department, couldn't get a response. Because I was just trying to review the applicants and the participants who had participated in it, and it wasn't available for me. And the other thing I want to say is that this hearing here is illegal, because it doesn't give us our 30 days. What was posted in the library was that July the 12th, which is tomorrow, will be your last day to submit your comment. And by saying you want to submit your comment, when you think about it, that means it's going to go before the City Council. Plus, when you look at the date of June the 28th, and then there was council meetings that were missed because of lack of quorum, and then it was a set for hearing that was not proposed. So you're really not in the guidelines of it. And like I said, the other thing, I would really like to know if this council knows, because there's an issue with this. One of the city council, I mean, the city's requirement is that their organization has to be established for two years. And then they're providing housing, housing development services within the boundaries of the City of Compton, or that provides services to the residents of the City of Compton. I'm just not going to go by somebody's word. And like I said, I went to look for the documents, and I could not. I was unable to actually look at them, which I feel is a problem. And the other problem, like I said, this is not a timely hearing, because this is not giving the City of Compton's, the City of Compton residents time to attend the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boone, for waisting that concern. Renee?
I'd like to address those questions. I don't know if everyone is aware, this particular year, administration, meaning top administration, the White House and Congress, there were a couple of issues with determining the allocations this year for HUD funding. They were extremely late this year. And as a part of that process, they did release to all the cities that there was an exception this year, and then we had a 15-day notice period. So we are within those guidelines. As long as we maintain tomorrow's date to receive any additional comments outside of this public hearing, which is allowed by law. When it comes to the organizations and the services that they provide, they do not legally have to be in the city to provide the service, but they do have to provide the services to Compton residents. How is this verified? This information is verified through a client intake form that provides us their information, which includes their income, which is also part of the eligibility process for a person to receive assistance.
Thank you.
We do. We were all notified via email from the HUD office. Your 15-day notice that shows the dates is a 15-day count. It's on the notice. If you count from the day it was released to the 12th, it's 15 days.
I want to ask Ms. Boone, if you could, if you could get with Renee after this, and she can speak with you one-on-one. Yes, sir.
Hello, good afternoon, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council people, honorable mayor, age of round. Wanted to first say, my name is Saul Fegaroa. I'm the program manager for El Nido Family Centers. El Nido, the word El Nido means the nest. It's a nonprofit organization. It's been around since 1925, so we've been around for a long time. We've been in the City of Compton for over 30 years. And I am a resident and homeowner in the City of Compton, in Ms. Tanya McCoy's district. The best district, isn't it? So, you know, I wanted to say, just say thank you to the Federal Grants Advisory Board for all their hard work and dedication, the commitment to hearing the proposals. I know it's a tough, it's really tough to, with a lot of requests and a lot of need in the community, to do the work that they're doing, but my hat goes off to them, because I see them every year dedicated to the community. We have a young father right up here that's part of the program, has been in the program for a few years. His partner and his baby, and we're working with teen and young parents in the Compton community. We had a, we have a mentorship program where we had 19 mentors and 19 mentees actually graduate. All the mentees were teen and young parents. And all the mentors were Compton residents or worked in Compton. So it's a homegrown, Compton-based business. One thing I want, I want the audience to know is that the funds that from the Community Development Block Grant are not the sole funds that any program or organization uses that's going to cover all their expenses. It is stated to us that the funds should supplement. So we should, if we do not get funds from the, from Community Development Block Grant, we should have funds to continue the program. I want to say that through our many years of getting Community Development Block Grant, Block Grant funding, we have leveraged additional funds. I mean, it's really important, even if we get a small amount from the city, it really helps us leverage a lot of other resources and funding to bring to the City of Compton. Through the, the funding that we've received through the City of Compton, we've leveraged for a 24-month grant where it was $790,000. That means we were ever able to pay the mentors so that they can take their mentees to lunch, take them to the movies, do activities in the community. We were able to give stipends to the teen and young parents. A mentorship program ran about $60,000. So they're expensive. So the money that we receive from Community Development Block Grant funding really helped us leverage and get other resources from outside the community into our community. So it's a very important stream to get other funding. And I want to just thank you for your ongoing support and help. We've partnered with Ms. McCoy, Ms. Sharif, and different activities. Zarita, as well as a backpack giveaway at Gonzalez Park Aquatic Center. I think we've done a lot of great things in the community, and we hope to continue this and to continue to leverage the money that we get from the, from the city to get more money and more resources that are then expended in this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional members of the public that wish to speak to this item? Yes, ma'am?
You mentioned that some of these locations aren't in the city, but they provide services to the city. So which ones are not the ones located here?
The Children's Clinic?
And then you also mentioned a revenue of that has to provide for the city. How much is the revenue? You said it caps up at 20. Do you know? Well, you said that the locations don't have to be here, but the services have to be provided to the families here. Do you have a certain amount of services that you have to provide here, or do they all be 100% based to here?
I want to make sure I understand your question. So you're asking me the...
So the locations that you don't have, you said that, like, let's say the Children's Clinic Medicare Center, right? It's not in Compton, but you provide those services here. What is the percentage of those services that are provided here? Are they 100% to Compton?
The full amount of the recommendation and funding that we provide have to go to all Compton residents. So we're providing the recommendation here of 50,000. All 50,000 will go to Compton residents only.
And then my other question is, you have here for 65,000 for the Compton and Parks Recreational Programs, but we had the general budget overview, and that was in there too. So what is this aside from the general budget?
In the budget, there's a funding number at the top, and CDBG is 2,800. So it falls under the 2,800 account, and that's what it's referencing.
Do you have, like, what the programs are that you're going to be providing as well?
Right now, during the summer program period, they do have a nice booklet that is available. And one of the programs, which is the Summer Richmond Program, will be funded through this project.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to the public hearing? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Discussion? Roll call?
Counselperson, Counselperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvan?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. Council comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Farrell? We didn't have a copy of that, correct? The presentation, the numbers?
It's in the package.
You know, I think I'm going to have to have my packet, my agenda thing checked, because my attachments don't come along. This is second.
Yes, item number three.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So with the, the, the nonprofits that receive the funding, the requirements are still the same. They have to turn in an annual budget and show you how many Compton residents were served. And you still, the process is still the same?
Yes, as a requirement, there is a, we receive their packages quarterly. If they like to turn it in monthly, that is fine. However, in their contract, it's at least quarterly. And that quarterly report includes all the client intake forms and all the support documentation that verifies that they're both low-income and that they live in the city. And those are the requirements for our programs.
So how much money did we have last year?
It was roughly, we received, every year we're having a reduction, so it was roughly two... I want to provide you the exact number. I don't have it on hand, but it's roughly around $200,000 difference or a little less. I don't have the exact number, but I can provide it to you.
It's a little less this year, though, correct?
Yes, every year it has gone down.
So I don't see, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see the, the senior full homebound program on this.
They did not apply?
So, Mr. City Manager, while we're on the subject, can you give me a full report? I've asked several times for a full report on our senior meal program for the city. And if we still have homebound delivered meals for shut-ins? And if we still have the reduced lunch program at the community center? And who's servicing it? And how long they'll be servicing it, and the price of the meals? And if they do service homebound shut-ins, the contact information, so we can refer citizens?
We do have the program to continue with a new provider, because old-timers lost their contract. There is a new provider through the county, and I'll bring back all that information to you, but there's no break in service. So I'll bring back some more detail to the body next meeting.
And I don't think old-timers lost their contract. I just don't think they applied again for the grant.
That's correct. I talked to the county representative. Yes.
Okay, so please, can you follow up with that, because I think I've asked several times? And also, do we have any money left over?
From prior year?
No, from this year. That was all the money allocated to the nonprofit?
Yes, this is all the allocation. This is the entire amount of funding that we are expected to receive.
And it's all?
It's all attached to a project. July, the last meeting in July, we will be coming back to take back any of the funds that weren't used from prior year to reallocate them to new projects. And that'll be at the end of this month, before you guys go dark in August.
And for the record, Madam City Clerk, was the public hearing posted properly? Counselperson Zarita, I believe this was one of the items that you didn't have to go through the clerk's office to publish?
We go, we go through the policy, which is to provide it to the bulletin. And the bulletin, we did have it printed by the correct date. And in order to give us the 15-day period, we have to allow the public to still provide comment to the City Hall by tomorrow. And then that would give us our 15-day period, which was the exception rule this year, only because it released the allocation so late to the cities. The information was released on the newspaper, the city clerk's office, the city manager's office, and the library.
And does that satisfy posting, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Farrell.
Any additional council comments? Thank you.
Thank you. I was listening to Ms. Farrell, and you're indicating that under your notice requirements, the public can comment through tomorrow? And is it under the regulations for these funds that all comments be received before the council takes action?
Comments can be received... When I double-checked with our HUD rep, she said that we can go past the public hearing as long as the comments are gathered and submitted when we turn in our annual action plan. Because individuals can actually come in before the actual hearing is held and give comments to the city clerk's office before today's date. From the time that notice is released, they can start providing comments to the city.
I understand that, but what I'm asking, under the regulations, with the federal regulations, prior to the council taking action, should the public have had the opportunity, either prior to the public hearing or at the public hearing, to present any comments they have?
They have that opportunity both before the hearing, at the hearing. In this particular case, because of how the 15-day period happened and with the city council's hearing date, they still have tomorrow as well. And we will collect those comments and then put all that together in a package for HUD.
Okay, but Madam City Attorney, I think you're making sense here. So is this, is this an action item for tonight?
This is an action item.
So what if, if comments, comments related to the hearing come in tomorrow that can influence the decision? Is there any, why, is there any time restraints that this has to be, taking action tonight and can't wait till next week?
We can go to next Tuesday, if you like. The HUD's requirement this particular year, they're giving us extension till August 15th to submit the annual action plan.
Well, I'm going to ask that we wait till next council meeting, since the city attorney raised the question. And it does make sense that if the... And I don't think we'd have to hold a whole another hearing. We would just take a roll call on the item, correct?
Yes.
Madam City Attorney?
Perhaps if we're going to, it would be appropriate to put this over to allow any and all comments to come, to come in. I don't know what your notice stated. If your notice indicated that if you wanted to present a comment in person, you would have to be here today. Otherwise, any written comments will be considered by the council whether, regardless of if you showed up, then I probably wouldn't see a problem with closing the hearing. Any additional comments received tomorrow being presented to the council for next Tuesday before making a decision. But if your notice doesn't say something to that effect, to err on the side of caution, it may be better to continue this hearing. And that way, next Tuesday, if there are additional comments that came in pursuant to your notice indicating people had until tomorrow, that would give the council a chance to actually consider them before taking a vote.
I agree. Madam Chair?
Yes. We can, we're still at council comments.
Okay.
And then we can proceed forward. Any additional comments? Thank you. And I just want to say briefly the thank you to the FGA for their time and care in reviewing these applications. I know they put a lot of thought and rubric into evaluating the various recommendations every single year. And I know that you all operate with integrity and really look out for the best interest of the community and the residents that are served with these dollars. So a big thank you to the FGA committee, and also I see there, Madam Chair, Ms. Postel here, representing the committee. Thank you also very much for your time. Thank you, Renee. Madam City Clerk, if we can just go directly to the item to be able to continue?
I would suggest maybe placing it on the record, a vote to continue the public hearing next week. And if you want to limit your comments to those who did not get opportunity to present any already, you can put that in your motion.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any additional? Yes. In accordance with the guidelines specified by Madam City Attorney, which would exclude additional commentary by the same people that had the opportunity to speak tonight.
So, can we, Madam Clerk, can you bring that list back with the council meeting next week of the folks that spoke? The list for... That spoke on the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call?
Counselperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvan?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
The item is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton adopting and authorizing the HUD mandated 2017, 2018... But I thought you wanted me to read it just to go on record to vote that you're...
I wasn't clear on that. Madam City Attorney?
I believe that first motion, if I'm not incorrect, Madam Clerk, was to continue the hearing. Now on this item, you would pull it off of this meeting date and move it over to the 18th.
Yeah, as we go in order. Because we can make a motion and take that into order. So we can just proceed forward with the next item?
So the next item is the 5:45 revocation public hearing?
We'll proceed forward with the next scheduled public hearing?
Okay, it's now 5:45 PM revocation for public hearing for the property located at 1560 and 1562 South Long Beach Boulevard.
Oh, that's the item that's being pulled?
So this item is being pulled. We are now at cons...
Is there a date that this item will be rescheduled, or?
This is a city attorney's item, and...
Oh, okay.
We would not like to set a date at this time.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you. We will now proceed forward with public comments. On agenda and non-agenda items. Mr. Robert Ray?
Thank you, Robert Ray Compton. First of all, item number two about the transit center. If I'm not mistaken, that's accessory agency... If I'm not mistaken, that's successor agency property. Shouldn't this be under the successor meeting instead of the city council meeting for item number two? I think it's on the wrong agenda. Also, the other thing, under warrants, the first one for the American Express, two four zero three four three. I'd like for somebody to explain all these charges on this American Express bill. There was a whole bunch of hotel rooms at Indian Wells, then they were credited back. And then we've got Caesar's Palace in Las Vegas. Now, does live in kind of high in the hog. And speaking of hogs, all this food! Grubhub, a hundred and seventy-one dollars. Now, Poyar Locos only forty, that's reasonable. And then we've got M and M and Carson, eighty-one dollars. And then we've got another one, Rascal's Teriyaki, a hundred dollars. Who's eating all this food? You know? It's, uh, no, I saw your birthday party, it wasn't on this menu. So I'd like an explanation on that. Also, last week, I made a lot of comments about opportunities for the American Red Cross. If anybody would like to volunteer or is considering becoming a volunteer for the Red Cross, we're actually having a volunteer meeting tomorrow evening at six PM at the Long Beach Chapter office. It's at thirty-one fifty East Twenty-Ninth Street in Long Beach. And that's right off the Spring Street exit to the four oh five freeway and just down around the corner off of Temple. So anyone wanting to get involved with the American Red Cross, this is your opportunity to come and learn about all the different opportunities. Red Cross is not just blood. And as I mentioned also last week, in the last twelve months, the Red Cross has responded to one hundred and seventy-nine disasters in the city of Compton. Most of those were house fires. And so there's all kinds of things that can happen. So volunteers are needed in all areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Ms. Anita Jones?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just took a break from work to come over here. I was coming, my name is Anita Jones. I now live in the second district. I left work to try to get over here to address you guys. I came on the twenty-seventh, but it wasn't no meeting. But what I'm here for is to try to see, find out about the update when I came in April about, because I almost got hit last night. Left work to pick up my grandson. Came back with cowork, almost hit me on my way home. I've been saying, leaving that job is a hazard to our health. I'm very serious. It was almost an accident today. And then also, I live right there by the paint shop, Galvan. Parking is insane. Right by the paint shop on Long Beach and Peck? Parking is insane over there. I got a parking ticket last week. Ticket lady thinks it's amusing when I'm working sixteen hours a day. Okay, so when I get home about eleven forty-five, I oversleep, can't get up out there, then I have to sit in my car and wait for her to come, street sweeper come. There's no place to park. So what we have been doing is once the street sweeper came, the ticket lady come, you know, we start scattering like roaches trying to get a parking spot. So I'm at the point now where I'm gonna wind up have to walk, catch a bus or something to try to get to work on Wednesday and Thursday because there's no place to park. I'm parking on Long Beach. Like I said, I get home almost at twelve o'clock, all the parking spaces are gone. And I just paid the ticket right before I came in here. And then another thing, coming out from Walmart, soon as you come out that light, it's a pothole or whatever you want to call it. You have to ease out of there and you still got cars trying to get out too.
Which part?
Huh?
Which part of exiting the Walmart?
Soon, right at the light.
The part on Bullis, the part on Long Beach?
I think that's Arlington.
Oh, so it's on Long Beach?
It's on Long Beach.
There's a light on Bullis too, that's why I was asking.
No, no, right, right on Arlington and Long Beach. So you have to ease out to keep from hitting it, you know what I'm saying?
We requested both of those items to the Public Works Department the last time that you came. And the pothole still has not been filled, it's been almost two months. And then the issue with the mirror request or having some type of safety when you come out of Santa Fe, the nursing home there. So I'm asking Mr. City Manager, we need an update, these are safety concerns and we need to hear requests. Public Works was supposed to actually go out the next day on this item.
Okay.
That's like a raceway. Last year before holiday, you had two people die right there, about a half a block from the job.
Yeah, it's really dangerous.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know the exact cross street, but it's north of Rosecrans and it's on, when you come out of the nursing home, that's on the left-hand side if you're heading northbound.
Okay, well, I'll go out to the Public Works and take a look at it. So Santa Fe and Euclid?
Yeah, right at, right in, at the nursing home.
It's right on that corner.
I'll have to take an assessment to see where we would put a mirror so you could see traffic. I'm not so sure where we would put that.
Because right at, I don't mean to cut you off, right at the driveway when you're coming out, it's a mirror.
There's one there.
You still can't see what's coming from the Esagundo Way. That's where the issue is there.
What's obstructing?
Coming from Esagundo. Cars parked right there because it's a home, which is part of the facility. So that's where it is because a few years ago, they painted the right side when you come to the gate. The right side, they painted it red, but that's not the size it should have been done.
So they need a red curb?
Yeah, red curb on the other side.
Because that's where the concern is, you can't see what's coming from Esagundo.
Yeah, it's when you're, when you're heading out of the facility, the southbound traffic from Esagundo heading that way, you just can't see in the curvature of the street, kind of contributes to the blind spot too.
Right.
We got it. Thank you. Thank you, hardworking woman. There's like a small strip where people can park. I think a red stripe would be appropriate because it's only, only two cars can really fit there, but it's blocking that traffic.
I mean, her issue where she can't park during the street sweep. So I'll have to go out and take an assessment of that and see. Maybe because there's just simply not enough on the street.
Yeah, it's because there's an auto body shop in the corner, so sometimes the cars that are in there to be fixed.
Oh, they park them out there, okay.
And that's an issue. Thank you. Mr. Saul Figueroa? Ms. Maria Villarreal?
Good evening. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Villarreal. I'm here tonight with a few concerns and one question. For those districts who, first the question, you know, for those districts who has swimming pools, I would like to know if it's any procedures in place where they tally how much money they collecting when they paying, when the kids are paying. The other question is that, is that any, anything in writing is how the kids or the adults needs to be dressed? You know, like with the, with, you know, with shorts, with, you know, to swim. There are some people that can go with shoes, with socks, and they, in the same area where the kid, the young kids are playing, you know? And I think it should be a section for adults and section for the kids, for the young, for little childrens. I observe a couple of things that I think we should be looking at for those swimming pools, you know, that we have in the city of Compton. And the time, you know, you open it from one to five, I believe, District One? Is that the time that you, that they open the swimming pool?
I don't have the exact time.
Okay, so if they open from one to five and everybody comes at one time, they don't have any specifications, you know, whether they have to be online. They all come in and rush themselves and just, you know, the person is in the window, just taking the money, throw the money, the kids throwing the money through the window and go in. So, you know, it's just, it's just a concern. And the other, the other concern is that on, on my street, you know, the sweeper comes in and they are not doing a good job. They leaving, I don't know whether there's the sweeper or, I don't know, but they just drive by and, you know, and the trash is still there. It seems like it's not, it's not done. And, you know, the parks during this time of the year, you know, summertime, you know, the parks are full with children's, parents. And I think we should have more police coming and check the parks, you know, because there's a lot of drinking, a lot of smoking during the day when the kids are, especially right now that the weather is so, so hot, you know, and we need to be careful. And we need to have more patrolling on the parks to make sure that kids are safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. What's your address? You said that they don't, they don't street sweep it? Because I'm getting a lot of complaints on my street.
It's District One, six zero nine West Peach.
Six zero nine West Peach. All right, thanks.
You're welcome. Mr. Jeff Jaggers?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
And distinguished city councilman. Three years ago, I introduced the start of KTNG eight sixty AM as a voice for the voiceless in Compton. So it's been three years since I've been here, so I'm just getting back to you guys. Fast forward, since then I've taught media arts at Compton Youth Build, graduating ninety-eight percent of the class. I provided small business, a venue of social media, and global public service announcements, promotions, and evaded the Latino Chamber of Commerce at Compton with event promotions, public relations, and I am the volunteer file clerk there. Currently, I basically, basically broadcast to over four hundred and ninety thousand streamers daily. I cover the globe, I cover the state, I cover here and I cover this nation. I have a lot. But more importantly, people are very intrigued with what goes on here in Compton, so therefore I tell them everything that I know. So I spend most of my waking hours going the streets. Since I, you can't hear me? Can you hear me now? All right. Put some bass in this. Okay, but since I became a volunteer member, I have witnessed from day one what goes on. I saw busted cootie talk orchestrated by Carlos Azavitos to gain the chamber by nefarious means. The city didn't step in to help, nor did it just stand by. It stood as breast of seeing it implode into the nothing a few council people and recitivists wanted. Everyone in Compton knew why this was happening, yet no assistance legal and or otherwise came to their need. That's when I popped up, okay? I came in and imparted a lot of updated nonprofit knowledge that was federally advised. I have a team of lawyers, a good team of lawyers. And upon further investigation, they've advised me to give them the correct answers to a lot of the paperwork that they were missing. Yet, that updated knowledge helped the chamber maintain its existence for both federal and state continuously. Upon further investigation, the dots connected Carlos' ulterior motive to Suda City when there was no historic preservation to his underlying goal. Yet questions similar to subterfuge to combine the chamber with two other citywide failures that extort the patronage of small business community. Surely, the small business community is not looked upon as expendable fodder. But then again, so is the issue of the Latino Chamber's legitimacy, name, and history, which errors on the fault of the oligarchs, not insuggestible answers or opinions mirth in Asmodian hypocrisy. Therefore, in fact, for every new city manager that came through here, Carlos pleads his falsivities as a self-elected president when the main file of the noticeable paperwork he carries denotes, quote unquote, "only as agent of process." Why he can't resume a bank, you know, he can't resume banking at B of A under the chamber's name when it was found out and supported by the B of A headquarters in North Carolina of his illegal activities. How he also be files to satisfy the nonprofit five oh one C three by advertising his ego who politically support the city attorney's reelection. Thank you, Compton Herald, that was a big no-no on the federal level. That, that I've already reported, okay? Nor did the quote unquote president think that went through. What's even more hysterical is that he doesn't even live here, no more than Irene Barazza, who seems to be his running mate, who lives in Long Beach. Yes, these outsiders have made mockery of the small business community and indicative of character. Nothing sells out integrity better than self-fulfilling providence draped in droll arrogant pompousky. What's even funnier, there are only two out of the five that have mixed ideologies and opinions as legacy lepers for the future of either a real city with a sense of culture or a retirement community where the empty buildings of Compton Boulevard matches the memory of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Navaleen Smith?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, Navaleen Smith, attended the two thousand and seventeen inauguration of the Compton officials. Each official officer gave a very inspirational speech. When Mayor Asia Brown addressed the audience, I turned and looked at my daughter. Tears was coming down her face. She was very impressed. The atmosphere at the Dollar High Center was great. The food was delicious. The live band didn't disappoint. They were fantastic. We all, we got our groove on. Every official, elected official, was voted in office to lead Compton in the right direction. They were sworn in to work with the community, as well as the community to work with them, to build Compton with new leaders, young and old, to work together to make things happen in Compton. Like the mayor said, let's finish the work and move forward and build our city together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Holyfield?
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the honorable mayor, city council staff, ladies and gentlemen. Indeed, it's an honor to stand at this time to behind a young lady. I also attended the inaugural. And in my years of being here, over fifty-five years, that was the greatest one. So I want to thank the city manager, I'm sure, for organizing because he was in the background. Everybody else was out there. And I haven't had, heard as many prayers and positive thinking in the city in all the time I've been here. So now what we must do is move forward with the services of people. And I know we're gonna do that. So tonight, I'm happy to be here because I have these baskets over here. Maybe somebody can help us bring them over.
Wow.
Now, the reason I'm really here and I was farming all day and this is from the YAL Center. Okay? And it's the, thank you, thank you very much. Now, this came from the center.
Wow.
This is the New Berlin, you should clap for those kids. We have, we have, there's greens, lettuce.
Wow.
Guindupers, peppers, and a second to second. Now, they also have corn growing, watermelons, you name it, the kids have it. Can you imagine? And they picked this for you tonight.
Wow, thank you.
From seven to seventeen, I just want you to know that it's how they love you. So from the inaugural to the New Berlin. So that lets you know we can really do it in unity. And then I'd like to say that the person really behind that movement is not me. It's Emily Hart Holyfield. She's from a plantation in Louisiana called Lucky Hit. She says she don't know how lucky it was, but it was a hit. So she matriculated through Southern University and got a mattress from Pepperdine, and she's a teacher now, and set that program up from Walton Middle School, we were there first, to that present site for the youth of this community. And we have the finest garden in state. If you want to doubt my word, just come by and look and help encourage those youth. An example, they have a raised garden, like you're sitting. Those of you who are really into what I'm saying about these youth, it's not about us. Farming is hard work. You can sit and garden. You can sit and garden. It's a raised garden. And they made it, they painted it, and they have celery planted in it, the kids. All you have to have, if you're handicapped, and they have a handicap sticker on it. So these are ideas and things that I'm saying from the youth of our community. All they need is a bit more of encouragement. And over there, I've never seen an environment that's about love. The families can drop their little kids off, seven-years-old girls and boys, and feel safe, that they'll be safe, clean, and friendly. That's the environment that it has. And it is due to the city, all of us together as one. And thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Holyfield.
I want to thank my help.
And Mr. Henry?
I got a couple more minutes, and we talked about the homeless and so forth. He's the one to talk to. When we got ready to clean up under that bridge over there at Rose Cranes in Alameda, we looked for him first, because there was a homeless situation, and there's not one now, and he's helped us with that, and thank him very much.
Well, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Holyfield. Mr. Richard Earl?
After that, I don't know if I can come up here with... Good evening, Richard Earl, Fourth District. I'm gonna come up here every week until I get satisfied with this thing, because this referendum is good reading. I want, I think that we should give this referendum out to everyone in this city so that they all know exactly what they are signing when the people come to their door. I think that these people, these people from outside of our city waging an attack on Compton because they think that we are weak. If we don't know and we don't read these things, you'll go and sign that, and then you'll vote yes. And these people come into here, they change our articles, and they'll get rich off of our city and our backs. That's slavery. They're not putting it in their towns. Though, those people are coming down here, waging war on Compton. If they want marijuana in their city, it's okay, but not in Compton. We have kids here, we're just coming out of, out of a plight of, 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 of crack, cocaine. And I don't know if a lot of you were here then, but it was terrible. We don't want anything like that here. I was handed something by one of my friends about you, Ma, Madam Mayor, when you went to a fundraiser with Mark Ridley Thomas.
I haven't been to a fundraiser.
That was funded by marijuana people.
False. And he doesn't even support marijuana, so...
He say he's not. He say that he's not, but Mark is putting this stuff in our city. He's not putting it in L.A. You need to watch him. I think that we need to, we need to do the things to keep Compton clean, clear, and safe for our kids to walk around. Giving them jobs in marijuana places is not good. Jobs in viable, in viable places to make a living is where they need to be. They don't need to have marijuana, be guarding marijuana plants, marijuana facilities. They need to be working under, 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 uh, programs where they can learn something and do something. Thank you.
I'm just gonna state this. I welcome anyone to bring evidence, but please do not make accusations about people that are just a hundred percent false, where you have no documentation, no evidence. It's two thousand and seventeen. If someone is at an event, you most likely can at least get a photo from social media or someplace. So please do not make accusations about me being places that I'm not. You can ask me and I'll gladly tell you. But I've not even been to a fundraiser with Mark Ridley Thomas in over a year. So please get your facts straight, and I appreciate it in advance. Thank you. Mr. Ray Murillo? Turn over, please.
Buenas noches a cada uno de ustedes.
Need a translator, un momento, por favor.
Okay.
Señor, thank you. Gracias. Our translator is coming down from upstairs. It'll be about one minute. We've mentioned that so many times, I agree wholeheartedly. I'll follow up with the city clerk on that. So we can prepare in advance.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanted to know if there is someone that could help me with the problem that I'm still having. But now that I'm seeing different names here, I'm seeing the name of Mr. Isaac, and I would like to ask him if he could help me. Because I don't have the means to go on. I would like to thank everyone for paying attention to me. And thank you, thank you for that, and good night.
Gracias, señor.
Maybe you could go in the back, Sergio will talk to him.
Thank you, Councilman Gobert. Ms. Brenda Pastel? Oh, okay. Oh, thank, thank you. Ms. Gilda Blueford?
Good evening, City Council. I'm here to basically make a request. And for the sake of time, I'm going to read what I have written. Know your right workshops expressively and exclusively for petitions being circulated in the city of Compton is required. It's important that the residents of the city of Compton are educated on the rights and responsibilities of both the petitioners and the petitioned. Petitioners are preying on people who are unaware of the marijuana issues and challenges expressed in the referendum. Because the petitioners are allowed to misrepresent the truth, full advantage is being taken of a segment of vulnerable voters who are unaware of the full marijuana ban in the city, and the fact that they choose not to engage the petitioners there are threatened and intimidated. They're told that they're going to be put on additional watch lists, which they are not, and that they need not relinquish any personal information to the petitioner. This is not a U.S. Census report. Also, in an effort to make a sound decision prior to and following the signing of the petition, there should be workshops provided throughout the city in order to educate the public on the pros and cons of commercial activities and commercial businesses in Compton. There should be a full explanation of the intent through charges, changes, and language of the thirty-one-page referendum in contrast to the full ban. For example, changing the districts between a marijuana business and a school from one thousand feet to six hundred feet is worthy of disclosure and discussion. We've had several workshops on budgets, Measure P, and the like. Therefore, it would be prudent to host educational workshops in easy-to-access locations on dates and times that would benefit the public at large. If this is something the council is not interested in pursuing, then would it be possible to allow the residents of the city to gather in public parks to discuss this life-altering decision? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marjorie Ship? Thank you, Ms. Ship. Ms. Susan Adams?
Good evening, Council. Susan Adams, District Four. I...
Sorry about that, Ms. Adams.
I equally share the concerns about this referendum concerning marijuana in our community. And I am truly appalled. If you read the referendum, and I suggest that all citizens read and understand why we are coming up to the podium and bringing this matter to awareness. There are so many different things in this referendum, marijuana referendum, that you need to be aware of, besides the concern, which I really have, since we are desperate for money, why the business tax, we're gonna charge five percent of gross receipts. And I think that is really funny. How in the heck are you going to determine gross receipt when they use cash? So, looking at this is really a joke. Regarding the six hundred feet from schools, there is no mentioning of churches. It is so disrespectful to not to mention churches. Also, in addition to that, I am truly concerned about the various methods of the marijuana cannabis that will be used. For example, I'll just point out one thing, and it is involving injecting. It's not just smoking, it's injecting as well. So, I just envision our community will be the melting pot, pot in the county or even in California. It is incredible how we are going to allow, and if it passes, allow the gates of hell to open in our community. Coming, coming from Long Beach is where I work. I'm seeing in Compton, we have our girls on Long Beach Boulevard, so many of them. And I'm just saying, here we go. We have the, this is coming through, trying to get through to our community. And also, looking at the girls, we're going to multiply, and it is truly gonna get out of hand. I'm also concerned about our children, our youth. We say that we love our youth, we want our youth to succeed. And I thought that was wonderful about the vegetables, but I envision cannabis in those containers, that this is what our children, the future, is going to be. I thought they'd be a part of the STEM program, be scientists, be doctors. But how can they be when their life is going to be working, not owning, working, in a cannabis shop, cultivation, lab testing? This is their future, and this is what we're trying to do. So I am alerting, and I want the citizens to be aware, that contacting the, a number, three one zero, four three one, seven seven four seven, to get more information, but go and march to your city clerk office and get a copy of this. This is really insulting, and this is how outsiders come in. Union people are doing this to our community. And this is how they're gonna try to take it over, but they're gonna fight for our community.
Mr. Don Smith?
Good evening, council members, mayor, city manager.
Good evening.
I am also here in concern about the petition that's being passed out from door to door in our community. Uh, and it's a daily, it's every day. Every day they have somebody canvassing our community, trying to
Right.
mislead, trying to lie, misrepresent what they're offering us to sign. And when she came up to my door, knocked on the door, she told me that, and I really wanted to address this to Mr. Rambo, as the city manager, because I know you've been an advocate on not having any marijuana dispensaries in Compton. And when they misrepresent the facts, and they come to your door, and a lot of people, elderly people in the community, and they come say, "I'm here to have you sign a petition." If I'm here to have you sign a petition, I think this is very important. I'm here to have you sign a petition to make marijuana illegal in the city of Compton. So, for me, participating in the council meetings, I know that you're an advocate against this, and so is the city of Compton. So when she tells me, "Oh, signing this petition is gonna make marijuana illegal in Compton," I say, "Marijuana dispensaries are already not permitted in Compton." Well, I know they're not permitted in Compton, that's why we need you to sign a petition, because since they're illegal, our kids are going to these dispensaries, and they're not being monitored. So after I took her spiel of her presentation, I put on my glasses, and I said, "Well, let me read it before I, before I sign it." Because from what, I understand, all of these issues have already been addressed. So when I put my glasses on to read the fine print in the petition, the petition said the opposite, the absolute opposite of what she was representing. So it was just a bold face, not even a misrepresentation, it's just a lie. And they, and they want to prey on our residents of our city in thinking that we're not gonna read the petitions, we're not gonna read what we signed. And, and when I read the petition, the petition said, "We want to legalize marijuana in Compton. We want to, we want to legalize warehousing, distribution, growing, selling, smoking." All of this is just right there in bold print. We want to legalize, not make it illegal, but we want to legalize. And I want to know, how do they get, how do they just go unmonitored? How do they, how can they just go door to door and just say a lie and misrepresent what they want us to sign a petition for? Don't they have to get a permit, do they, do they need to get a permit to pass out a petition in the city?
It's really the city attorney that could provide some insight in the clerk. Ms., Madam City Attorney? No, we're not gonna take questions from our audience. Go ahead.
Okay, the question is...
The question is, do they have to get a permit to circulate a petition in the city?
I'll have to check our municipal code. I know we, we have a section that deals with permits for solicitations, but I'm not sure about petitions. Because a lot of times, you have petition get, signature gathered just outside of businesses, etc. But I'll check our municipal code to see if we address it at all.
And what is the municipal code against them misrepresenting what they're petitioning?
If you actually have evidence that information is being misrepresented to you in an effort to obtain your signature, I would probably report that to the state or the county. I don't know if this is a county measure or a state measure.
It's, the city clerk has reviewed and approved the initiatives, but she, I know that when there are issues with elections, people can report them at the clerks, and if there's something with some type of fraud, there's an affidavit that you could fill out and also submit it to the state that oversees the elections.
Yes.
For a petition?
You can make your complaint.
So if you felt that it was misrepresented, then you can make your complaint as the city attorney said, yes.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, and there's the petition that's circulating, was reviewed, and given a summary that's circulating with the petition by the city attorney. But when you have discussion, this is what brings out information. So, Madam City Attorney said, if you have any proof or evidence of being misled, I have several videos that people have sent me randomly with the people on their porch interviewing, and they're saying that they are working for the city, and it's a city petition, which is not true. Is it, Madam City Attorney, is it a city petition for the city of Compton?
I'm not familiar.
That's what they, that's the way they represented themselves to me too, and several of my neighbors, because I'm the president of my block club. And we discussed it, and they're going door to door, and they're petitioning for signatures, but they're misrepresenting what their petition represents.
Absolutely, and it's not just talk, because like I say, people will call me actually when the people are at their porch. And this, I'm not talking one person, two persons, I'm talking twenty, thirty people have actually called, walking around their porch, and people are saying, "We're working for the city, this is a city council petition, mayor, city council, we're city employees." And it's just, it's a lot.
Right.
As far as, I know, Madam Attorney is not familiar, Mr. City Manager, do we have an official city petition from the city of Compton, from your office, circulating to the city of Compton?
No, we do not, not from my office, no. But looking at the website, there's laws governing petitioners, so we'll do some researching.
And also, while you're researching, Madam City Attorney, I always was under the impression that folks that gathered signatures for a city petition had to be registered citizens in the city of Compton, or whatever city they're petitioning for. And these are hired people, these people are briefed and sent out in the community, and they're being paid, that's why they're walking in the aggression that they are walking. So, I would suggest, what I tell my mother and my father, don't sign nothing. You know, because you're not going to sit there and read two or three pages and make an informed decision while somebody's standing at your door. But what I really tell my mother, who's eighty-one, and my father, who's eighty-six, don't even open the door, because it's probably a scam. So, beware.
When I read the petition back to him, and it was the opposite of what she was saying, she still insisted that what she's saying is that she's making this illegal. And it says right there in black and white print, it's a petition to legalize these different things about marijuana, where it's growing, warehousing, distribution, smoking, selling, and it's had nothing to do with making anything illegal.
I think you prove your point, Mr. Smith, and I would just say that, when the folks come to your door, get your cameras out, start recording, start recording. The more proof we have, the better the case is.
This particular lady said she was from...
Thank you, sir, we're going to move forward in the meeting. But if you have any documentation, we can bring it forward, and we can go from there. Thank you, sir. Ms. Lynn Boone?
Lynn Boone, City of Compton. I want to thank the acting city attorney and my councilperson in District One for addressing the grants manager in regards to the issue. I just want to say, on item number seven, it's a warrant regarding the best restoration. I've asked this before, and I've asked it in a town hall meeting, and I did get an answer from the city manager. But I want to know how much money has been received from shutting down these marijuana facilities? Because you have them listed on the best restoration warrant. And when we can get a total of that, I know you said you can't count it the day that you shut them down, because you've had plenty of time since then. That money needs to put into, be put into a separate account, and use that money towards paying these bills, the shutdowns and whatever, and maybe even going towards getting some more code enforcement. The other thing that I wanted to say was that, in the minutes, councilperson in District One and councilperson in District Three, you addressed about actually looking into the commissions, the boards, committees, and maybe revamping them, or taking a better look at them. My issue with that is that, I think that all of those people that are on a committee, commissioner or whatever, they need to be trained on the city charter, the municipal code, the city expense reimbursements, all of this. Because there's so much division here in this city. And we are a chartered city, and when you look at the charter, the first thing it says is that, the powers of the city, which is the people, the power, is vested in the city council. That's because each council member represents people here in the city. And collectively together, they become the city. The mayor does not run the city of Compton. We do not have that type of administration here. And that needs to be explained, because that's part of the division. These committees and boards and whatever, they become disciples. And they walk around here, and they're on one accord. And the division is just becoming, just overwhelming. The respect needs to go to the council members, as well as any other elected official up there. And when they vote on an item, they vote, because I know in District One, we call our councilperson, okay, and I know I'd get upset about issues. So, it's not that they should be up here voting for what one person wants, or what two people want. They need to vote in the best interest of the city, the people, and the employees, and not just an idea of one person. Pretty much that's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. Madam City Clerk?
We're now at consensus agenda.
Thank you, oh, yes ma'am. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Okay, we'll get, got it, four more people, thank you.
Lamika Horton-Pope, Third District. I'm basically here because the residents that are watching on TV, I just kind of want to, I guess, piggyback on what some of the residents and some of the council members said about not signing anything. I do believe, we remember when council voted to ban all dispensaries. And the dispensaries were banned, now we have a petition circulating in the city because somebody has orchestrated it, and they want dispensaries in our city. So, I urge everyone that's watching, everyone that has a family member or elderly person, please talk to your family, don't be fooled, don't sign any petitions, because we do not want dispensaries in the city of Compton. So, we want to stop it. We all need to get together, we need to walk the streets, because we can come up here every Tuesday and talk and say whatever we want, but if we don't come together as a community and get in these streets and start walking and do what we need to do to get these crooked people out of our city, we're going to lose.
Kimberly Manning, District Three, and I want to give clarification to the mayor, just so you know, if you're not aware, your name is being used. When the lady came to our house yesterday, she told me, I opened the door, I did not give my name. Because when you come, you say hello, or whatever you want to say to welcome the person. She said, if I didn't give my name, she had a list with my name, and she was going to report me to the mayor, because the mayor was behind this. And they're also stating they're working for Teamsters. Well, I happen to know, she doesn't work for Teamsters. She's being paid, and you're saying transparency? Well, let's be transparent, because she's using your name. And you're supposed to punish me because I didn't give my name. So, I'm reporting myself to you, the sheriff is here, you can arrest me for not giving it, because I'm not going to. I'm not signing anything that's bringing more trouble to this city. It's filthy, it needs to be cleaned. We don't need marijuana. People need to be healed, yes, but we don't need marijuana. I don't care whose name is behind it, okay? So, we need to put a cap on it, and that's how I feel.
Let us remember, before you begin, that we have had repeated testimony of people coming up here saying that the petitioner is lying at the door. They're saying that they're working for the city, now they're saying the mayor's behind it. I am not behind the petition. And so, you all can, you have to really discern what's going on here. Are people being truthful, or are they lying? And at the end of the day, when we ban marijuana, I already said that, at the end of the day, it's up to us whether or not we will have our own policy or not. Or we'll let somebody from the outside come in and dictate what's going on, and that's exactly what's happening. And they're not coming here because of me or the council, they're coming here to make money. This is a business. Marijuana is a multi-billion dollar industry, it's not, some things are just way bigger than me. You guys give me way too much credit, this has nothing to do with me. This is about making money, period. And when you all exclude yourself from being at the table to discuss policies of what you want, what you don't want, what you can tolerate, what you don't, you take yourself out of the bargaining table. Because now, somebody has shoved a policy down our throat, and this is the same thing that I said a year ago. And once that policy starts circulating, that's it. We don't have a chance to say, you know what, instead of five percent, I want ten. Instead of dispensaries, I don't want dispensaries, I'll only take cultivation. We don't have the ability to negotiate anymore, because we said, we had a stiff neck, and some of us put our head in the sand, and we said, "We don't want marijuana." And we were naive to really believe that just because we said we don't want it, that somebody was not going to spend their money to come in here and get these signatures like they did in every other city, they did it in Long Beach, they did it in Los Angeles. There's marijuana approved all around us, and so, we're not on our island, even though we may feel that way, even though some of us believe that we are not an island. This is not the United States of Compton, and so, I just ask that people have some discernment, use some wisdom, if you don't know what you're signing, don't sign it. If you don't recognize that the person's being truthful, you all, people know whether or not someone is telling the truth, so if you think that somebody is lying to you, do not sign it. And then, most importantly, read for yourself, read for yourself. If it's not something that you think that you can support, if I don't have time to read something, I don't even sign it. It's just that simple. So, if you don't have time to read your own petition, don't sign it. But again, you all can't just believe that someone's behind it because they say my name. I mean, people can say anyone's, they can say President Obama is behind it, and he's not really behind it. So, let's use some wisdom, thank you.
Hello, mayor, council.
Hello.
Good afternoon, we just wanted to take a few minutes to bring good news and good tidings. That's what I like to bring, and you do have to use wisdom. I do see some progression with the whole weed situation. I think each one teach one, we just have to be accountable for our actions first, and then make sure that we just be keepers of one another. And so, I'm doing that today with Ms. Patrice Royal. She's running for Ms. Compton, and I'm supporting her through my business, and we're doing what we can to allow her to network and get the votes in that she needs. She's a positive young lady, and I wanted to see if she can speak to you all briefly.
Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Patrice Royal, and I'm running for Ms. Compton. My mission for running for Ms. Compton is I want to touch my generation and my younger peers. A lot of my generation and younger peers don't have role models. They look up to the people that's in the streets, and I want to let my peers and my younger generation know that there is successful things going on in Compton, and there is successful people coming out of Compton. And I want to be one of those role models that the kids can look up to. I want to show them that there is a positive way, you don't have to go the wrong route to make money. Fast money is not always good money. And I want to let them know that there is some, there's better ways of going about life versus going a negative route, and I want to let them know that I am a success from Compton. And I want to let them know that they can make it, and I want to be the one to push them. I want to be the one that motivates them to do the right thing. And I want to let them know that they do have someone, because I'm here. And I'm running for Ms. Compton, and I want to let my city know that I'm here, and I want to help. So, I want to help with the marijuana, I want to help with the prostitution, I want to help with the gang banging, I want to help with all the negative. And that's why I'm here, and that's why I'm pushing for Ms. Compton. So, please vote for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Henry, City of Compton. And it's in reference, or just a little reply to individuals and petitions. You have the right, first of all, as a citizen, to ask an individual to show you identification for the petition that they bring to your door. If someone comes to my door with a petition asking me to sign it, the first thing I do is say, "Who are, what company are you with? Where is your identification?" They're supposed to have badges that identify themselves with their pictures on it. And if these people cannot produce or show this type of information, I'm like the councilwoman, "Don't open your door." People wake up. It's serious out here, and the mayor just said it. This is bigger than the city of Compton right now, you're dealing with a billion-dollar business. And they're going to do, lie, cheat, steal, whatever it takes to get in this city. If you're signing a petition and no one is showing you any identification as to who they are, are giving you any information as to the company they're representing, it's false. Real posters, real petitioners have badges with their pictures on it, and it names the individual company that they're working for or representing. If you can't get that, don't deal with them. This is real. Marijuana is trying to get into the city of Compton, we are all against it. We've said we're against it, but, and there is a strong but here, now, they're going to force it on us. That's what's about to happen. They're going to force it on us, because first of all, they believe we're a city of ignorant people who don't read. We need to read everything before we sign. We're not ignorant people. And if you have senior citizens, the Dollar Height Senior Program needs to be telling people about these petitions that are going around, awareing the community. The schools need to be sending out pamphlets to children, for kids to take home to their parents to read that there are false petitions going around in this city. We can counteract this, and we can fight this off, but we have to have a game plan. They have a serious game plan, and their game is to win. But our game is also to win, this is our city, and let's win back the city. We can't let anyone come in and take over this city. I went to Enterprise, I went to elementary school in Compton when it was the Enterprise Unified School District. That was before, it was, I'm telling my age, that was before it was the Compton Unified School District. I went to middle school and high school here, left on the way to college, came back. We need to read, that's the problem. A quick fix ain't going to do it. You need to read, and if you're not willing to read three or four pages, don't sign. It's that simple. And we need to aware our senior population within this city of the petition that is going around, and we need to aware people with mental health issues. They're targeting everybody for a signature. And we need to have all the town hall meetings that were given, let's put together a town hall meeting on this fake petition, and let people know that it's circulating, it's going around. Council members, I ask, have a town hall meeting and educate us, the citizens, on the negativity and the false doctrine, for lack of a better word, that's going around in the city. Thank you.
Any additional speakers? Yes, sir.
Agenda item number five. Six hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents is not a lot of money, but in the budget of some of our families, it is enough. Many of us would love to explore and travel. I'd love to be in the desert with a few cold refreshments. Two places come to mind, Indian Wells and Vegas. From the vague details, it appears a weekend getaway in Indian Wells was considered appropriate for four rooms? Would there have been a quorum? Good thing someone called it off? Or was it later paid by another credit card? Embezzlement? Who would have gone? What would have been discussed? Are we trying to get water from the desert now? Vegas, Mr. Rambo, did you use some block? Why are we paying for a hotel stay on Sunday, May twenty-first, at two hundred dollars? How did Compton benefit? Is it object code forty-two seventy? How much are their late fees and interest, since this statement is past due almost one month? You are requiring contractors to hire fifty percent from Compton? Thirty. Why doesn't Compton, the Compton City Council, adopt the same principle? In the statement, only El Pollo Loco, a Compton taxpaying establishment, and consequently, the... the lowest amount, represents one out of seven. That's when you take out all those other charges. Agenda item number six. Why did we pay three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars for one laptop? Besides the clean, sleek lines, amazing presentation, beautiful box, an Apple computer is not something that one person needs on this council. It is unbelievable that we would pay that exorbitant fee on a lavish laptop. Item number seven. Why did we use an outside contractor? Public Works can't do it? Is the city going after that entity for all the fees? How much has been recovered in the past? Item number two. Let's clean up MLK. That transit center is horrible. It is absolutely disgusting. We should not, as citizens, have to walk to that train station that, this is the hub city. That transit center connects us to the rest of LA and the rest of the city. We can go from there to Santa Monica. We can go from there to anywhere else. We can afford to have a job somewhere else by taking that transit center. But it is horrible. It's filthy, and no one seems to clean it up. Why are we not endorsing or enforcing any of the ordinances? Have the sheriffs been told not to? Because I've seen them quite often out there. As I'm walking out, all I hear is cush, cush, cush. It hits me in the face. What is going on? We're talking about marijuana. Well, you have it there. Let's start from the visible. Yet, nothing gets done. These are a lot of questions, but never any answers. Always, it'll come later. I think it's time for some actual answers and not the runaround. We deserve it.
Thank you, sir. Any additional public comments? This is the last person we're going to proceed forward with the meeting.
My name is Carmen Caponis, and I'm a resident of Compton. I just wanted to say that anybody going around saying that they work for the city and they're trying to sign a petition, people should know that that's not true. That's all I can say. Don't sign it.
Thank you. Madam clerk?
We're now at consent agenda.
Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion unless a council member requests that an item be removed or discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvan?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We're now at city manager's report.
Mayor, Council, this is a request to schedule a workshop for two prospective proposals for the use of the Martin Luther King Transit Center. One is by Apex Realty, and the other is by Metropolitan Transit Authority. We want to schedule that for the eighteenth of July at four P.M.
Is that next Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Need a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? I have a question. Are both of these items for leases, or is one of these items to purchase?
Apex Realty would like to purchase the property.
All right. Thank you. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvan?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We are now under a new business. Item number three is continued. Item number four is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton amending the two thousand seventeen eighteen fiscal year budget and authorizing the city manager to execute a release to accept the settlement check from Zurich, North America from the city's crime fidelity policy. So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just if the city manager can just give an explanation for the people.
Mayor, Council, this item was brought forth by the city attorney's office. And it's a, I'm sorry.
If you'd like, if you have questions about it, we can have the risk manager who put this together. Does she leave us? The risk manager, Monica Turner, come up and answer the questions for you.
Good, good evening. Hi.
Hi.
So, this settlement check is for the theft that occurred in the treasurer's office in December two thousand sixteen. Policy limits were a million dollars. And we received a million dollars. We filed a claim. They fought it, but we did prevail. And if the city, if you authorize the city manager to sign the release, we will send the release to the insurance company, and they'll send us a check for a million dollars.
That's, that's from the four, three point eight million dollars of embezzlement?
Three point seven, yes.
And is that going to affect our, our deductible?
No, we won't have to pay the deductible. It will probably affect next year's crime policy. That will go up.
Is it going to increase?
Yes. It will probably increase.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Madam City Attorney? No? Okay. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Before we go into the roll calls, so, Mr. City Manager, so, are we going to go after any other restitution, or is this the end of this case?
That winds us way through the court system. And I've spoken to the city attorney's office, and they are going to go after all the restitution they can. They're looking at the employees, former employees' assets, what's available after the cases adjudicated.
So have we done an internal investigation?
There was an audit done by a contractor, and there have been findings in that. There has been, there'll be some employee action taken internally. And they're also, we haven't received the report from the FBI yet, but once we get that, we'll take a look at some other aspects of it.
So the investigation that was done by the auditors, have they given a final report?
They've given a final report of what they did in their audit through the controller's office and the treasurer's office. The controller has looked at that, as have I, and the personnel matters are something that would be discussed with the mayor and council at closed session.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Also, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I also spoke with the city controller and asked her, would she pursue whatever monies we would have coming back through our purse, you know?
So I did speak with her about that.
So that is still, that's something that she'll be following up on.
Do you expect, Mr. City Manager, that the, there'll be additional findings for any employees that colluded, or is the thought that the individuals still acted alone?
I can't publicly comment about that. I can just tell you that I have been in contact with the FBI, and that's all I'll say about that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvan?
He went to the restroom.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We are now at approval of warrants. Warrant number two four zero three four three, date six twenty-eight seventeen, American Express Travel Related Service Company Incorporated. Weekly refreshments and miscellaneous charges amount six hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents requested by the city manager. Warrant number two four zero three five nine, date six twenty-eight seventeen, League of California Cities, Los Angeles County Division dues amount one thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars requested by city manager. Warrant number two four zero three six zero, date six twenty-eight seventeen, League of California Cities, two thousand seventeen, membership dues amount twenty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars requested by the city manager. Warrant number two four zero three seven seven, date six twenty-eight seventeen, United Site Services of California, restroom service, delivery, setup, and removal amount eight hundred one dollars and fifty-seven cent requested by the city manager. Warrant number two four zero three eight seven, date seven three seventeen, Almo's Cookies and Company Restaurant Services, Refreshments and Linens for Tea and Fashion Show amount one thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-eight cent requested by the city manager. The total amount of those warrants is thirty thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and nineteen cent. Warrant number two four zero four zero one, date seven three seventeen, Best Buy Business Advance Payment for Computer Equipment Amount three thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cent requested by the city manager. Warrant number two four zero four zero nine, date seven three seventeen, California Contract Cities Associates Annual Membership Dues Amount five thousand ninety dollars requested by city manager. Warrant number two four zero four one one, date seven three seventeen, Carnesia Christian, the services catering for Mother's Day luncheon amount three, three thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cent requested by Parks and Recreation. Warrant number two four zero four four zero, date seven three seventeen, Gateway Cities Council of Government Annual Membership Dues Amount twenty-seven thousand dollars requested by the city manager. Warrant number two four zero four five nine, date seven three seventeen, Independent Cities Association, two thousand seventeen ICA Summer Seminar Amount six hundred and fifty dollars requested by the city manager. The total amount of those warrants is forty thousand seventeen dollars and eighteen cent. Item number seven, warrant two four zero five two three, date seven three seventeen, State Water Resources Control Board Water System Fees Amount thirty-eight thousand five hundred and six dollars requested by the Water Department.
Isn't that a separate number?
Yes.
Item number six. So we don't have to do six and then do seven?
We can do them all.
Okay. I thought because they were separate items, not a mistake.
That's the way we put them.
Oh, okay. Got you.
Ward number two four zero five two three, date seven three seventeen, State Water Resources Control Board Water System Fees Amount thirty-eight thousand five hundred and six dollars requested by the Water Department. Warrant number two four zero four zero two, date seven three seventeen, Best Restoration Services Incorporated Emergency Boardups and Illegal Marijuana Closures Amount five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars requested by Building and Safety. Warrant number two four zero four nine two, date seven three seventeen, Los Angeles County Clerk's Office Election Services Related to two thousand seventeen Primary Election Amount one thousand six hundred nine dollars and sixty-four cent requested by the city clerk. Total of those warrants forty-five thousand five hundred ninety dollars and sixty-four
Is there a motion on the warrants?
Well, I think we should take them by item. So, item number five?
Is there a motion for item number five?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, no disrespect, it just, sometimes people just don't really understand, and it's better to ask than to just assume or just to make accusations or accuse things. But I'm sure everybody on the panel has their definition of workshops and conferences. For me, it's an opportunity to go and mingle with people of my peers, stay abreast on new ideals, network, learn what other people are doing in other cities, what may work for them, may work for a city like us. If you don't think out of the hood and out of the box, you can't make improvements. And I've been on a few workshops, and every workshop that I've gone to, I brought back information. I was a little more educated on different subjects. And I think the eating for the council people are different from employees. With the council people, we have a travel policy that everyone that's interested in city government should read the travel policy. And I'm very, my travel policy is like my Bible, because my mother was indicted on travel-related issues. And I make sure that I follow the rules. And with the council people, the mayor and the council, we get reimbursed, where opposed to staff gets their seventy-five dollar stipend for food upfront. So you may see charges or receipts for food, but it's a reimbursement. Each council person is responsible to turn in receipts, turn in invoices, and re, and get reimbursed for the food, for their seventy-five dollar stipend of food you get a day. And it's, it's, when you, when you travel and you go away, even, your food is expensive. I mean, you don't, sometimes you don't have choices. You may be somewhere where you, you.
I want to ask that we do not have people speaking from the audience. We have public comment, and Councilwoman Zarita, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. And just if you ever have any questions about any travel or workshops or conferences, feel free to ask. And I think maybe the city manager should, in September, when we come back, think about doing a presentation on, on travel policy and conferences, and what actually falls under a justifiable conference or workshop that's paid for by the city. And it's just unfortunate that different departments go on workshops all the time, but theirs don't come before the council as the council members do. But I'm fine with that. That, that makes us accountable for what we do. So I'm, I'm glad, and bringing these warrants, warrant by warrant, was something that was implemented under my leadership, the council that I was with. I don't remember if it was this entire council or not. But this is how you hold people accountable. And you make them explain and answer to the different charges. So I want to thank you for being concerned. But if you, if you ever have any questions about the agenda, you can always call the city manager's office or whoever your council person is, or you can call me. But just wanted to say that for the record.
Madam Mayor, may I just?
Yes, ma'am.
Expound. And as far as the hotels, we don't choose the hotels. The actual conference chooses the host hotel, and we participate. For me, I went to Contract Cities, which was the one in Indian Wells. It was a great opportunity as a new council person. They have new council member workshops that gives you the opportunity to learn different things, things that, you know, as a new council person, you don't particularly know. So they tell you, I had to take an ethics training, and it was able to be provided there. So I attended the ethics training. So there were quite a few things that benefited me. That's why I chose to attend that one. And as far as the other conference, the Girls Bullying Conference that was at Caesar's Palace, that is, it was an outstanding conference that I attended. It happened to be, it was either Las Vegas or Orlando, Florida. So I took the one in Las Vegas. But that conference, I plan to do some things with some young women because bullying is something that is very prevalent in the community right now, and especially for youth. And I plan to do a few things in that area to assist young ladies in knowing what is important and what you need to pay attention to. And we, as an adult, we need to pay attention. So it did give us some highlights, some things to pay attention to. And we as an adult, we need to pay attention, so it, it did give us some highlights, some things to pay attention to because you don't know. And so it gave me some tools to even talk with young people, even when I'm outside of my realm of just, you know, being a council person, just to talk to youth, to let them, to just ask questions. There's questions that you can ask, and so that's why I chose to attend that, that conference, so thank you.
And then, um, I'm sorry, mayor, and the conference in Indian Wells, the majority of the topics were about marijuana in your city, marijuana in your workplace. You know, can your employees go on lunch break and smoke marijuana? So if you gotta have all these policies in place and you have experts at these workshops that actually give you templates on how to implement these policies. So it's, it's really not fun. I mean, you're in, you're in workshops from eight-thirty to five o'clock and it's, it's back-to-back-to-back, break for lunch. So, you know, it's, it's very, very educational. And if someone goes on a workshop and don't bring something back, then I can't explain that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
On item number six.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
And on item number seven.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We're now at council comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Zerita?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I wanted to start off.
I was first, no.
Oh.
I'm just kidding.
It's okay. I, I, whatever you want, to allow me to keep this seat.
I'm kidding.
First of all, I wanted to say happy birthday to Ms. Brenda Postel. She just walked out, but I was hoping she was gonna be here. Happy belated birthday, and from your social media, I saw you had a very nice time, happy birthday. Um, I'm, I will be hosting a town hall meeting, July nineteenth, with the city manager and the town hall sheriff. From six to eight P M., one, zero, one, five, I mean, excuse me, one, zero, five, one, West Rosecrans Avenue. That's at the N H S Neighborhood Housing, uh, Stabilization Center in front of Gonzalez Park. So it'll be from six to eight, light refreshments. I'll also be hosting a Pacific Islander luau at Gonzalez Park on July twenty-second, from twelve to four P M. We're gonna have the Pacific Islander dancers, um, food and, um, entertainment for the kids. And the pool will be open on that day too, so if your kids wanna bring their swimsuits, the pool will be open. And, um, having several complaints lately about the street sweeper. Either the water's not going, it's not coming on schedule, or the tickets are not being cited properly. So, Mr. City Manager, can you do an audit on the street sweeper? And the, somebody brought up the signs and, and the uniforms at the swimming pool. Um, I, I could speak for Gonzalez Park, and it is in a little disarray. Some of the signs, um, should be made permanent signs, Mr. City Manager. Um, I would suggest that the signs like where it says, because there are signs that say absolutely no gym, gym trunks and absolutely no T-shirts. But all the signs are made in paper and you, you might miss them. So I just think on signs about dress code, um, lady side, men's side, I think those signs should be made in the signage, plastic, whatever you call it, uh, material to post. And not have all that paper hanging on the walls, taped on the walls.
That's right.
And I wanted to thank the city attorney for speaking up and making sure we stay in compliance with our public hearings. And if there was any inconvenience to the F G A B committee, we apologize, but we just want to do it right the first time, thank you. And I already talked about that travel reimbursement. And one other thing, so that, that people, some people talked about Walmart tonight are entry and exit. I just want to put you folks on notice, my niece was robbed at Walmart at two-thirty in the afternoon, on a Friday afternoon. And she wasn't hurt, but the guys jumped out the car. It was three people in the car, two guys and a girl driving the car, young girl with a stuck, uh, do-rag on her head. And, uh, the two guys jumped out the car and snatched her chains off and she didn't even have a purse, they were trying to take her cellphone. And she was very sha- shaken up, young lady, first time being robbed and just kinda got her off guard. But I just want to warn all you all to, and she said as she reflected, she saw the car circling in the parking lot. And when they, she walked past it, they kinda made a U-turn and came behind her. And she got into a tussle because she didn't want to let her phone go because she wanted to be able to call somebody to tell them what happened. So just be careful, watch where you park, watch cars circling through the parking lot. And I was under the impression that in the beginning Walmart was gonna hire two full-time sheriff deputies. But now I'm learning that they didn't do that. So, Mr. City Manager, if you can get a report on, well, actually, I asked the captain if he can get a report on all the reported robberies in the Walmart parking lot. And actually, um, whatever you can release to us, I don't know if you can give us the exact footage of what the cameras circulate? Because they do have some solar-powered cameras in the parking lot. But I, I'm just curious to know as the amount of folks that actually report robberies in the parking lot of Walmart. And one other thing, Mr. City Manager, I just noticed since you took, somebody has taken down the tarp around the transit center. Uh, down the side where the people sit on the bus stops to wait for the bus stop, used to have a lot of graffiti on it. So the tarp has been taken down, it looks a lot better, but there's a fence up there. And I'm wondering if, are we paying to rent that fence that's around the sidewalk of the, the transit center that goes behind the grocery store?
We're paying for it, but I don't, I think we're renting it because we're still painting the fencing and all that around it. But I'll check with, uh, with, uh, successor agency, um, because they're still working on that project over there.
Okay, and then one other thing, there are still some trailers at, uh, six hundred Alameda in the parking lot. Are we renting those? You can give me a report back on that. And I think that's it. I did mention the town hall meeting, town hall meeting, July nineteenth, District One residents, but everyone's welcome to come, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zerita. Councilwoman Galvin?
Yeah, um, uh, oh, I want to, uh, uh, give a big thank you and a shout out to everybody that attended, um, our, our swearing-in ceremony on Friday at the Dollar Height Center. Um, I think, I thought it was a really good event. Um, I want to thank, uh, all the city staff that helped put the event together, all the liaisons, uh, because I think they were all a part of it. And, um, as well as Melissa, uh, the mayor's liaison for, uh, doing all the work to make sure that, uh, the event was a success. I want to apologize to anybody that was in there that was, uh, hot because it was very hot inside that room. Um, but, uh, I think overall it was a great event and, um, like I said, another thing, I'm excited to, uh, I think I said it last time, but I'll say it again. I'm excited to, uh, continue to work with, uh, Mayor Brown and to continue to work with, uh, Tana McCoy, as well as the other people that got rea- the other elected officials that got reelected to another, uh, uh, term. So, um, I'm excited, I want to thank you guys again for coming, it was really great. And everybody that was, uh, you know, serving food or serving drinks or, uh, playing music or taking pictures, uh, you guys all together, everybody working together made the event the success that it was. Um, I also want to report, well, there's been a lot of increase in crime, uh, like in the area, like where I live at. I know today at the park, there was a stabbing, uh, that took place right there. When I got home, there was like helicopters and a bunch of sheriffs everywhere. So, uh, maybe we could increase, uh, patrolling, it's, it's summer, so the crime usually spikes in the summer, right, uh, Cecil? Are we doing anything for that? Because I remember when Lee Baca was the sheriff, he used to send a lot of different officers for us, right?
Through that last summer.
Yeah, are we getting any kind of?
So, when the sheriff, when Lee was a sheriff and, uh, when I was a captain here, the city used to pay for Summer Violent Task Force. Um, other cities pay for additional summer violence, uh, task forces to come out. The sheriff, um, at the time, Baca, would also, uh, we had a much larger gang unit at the time. And currently, that gang unit has, uh, the deployment has dropped dramatically, at least it had in the last, uh, three years. So, uh, to answer your question specifically, we're not getting any extra resources free of charge from this, from the county.
Do we have any, uh, any, uh, plans to, uh, pay for increased sheriffs for the summertime?
We have not approached you with that, uh, yet, but we can.
We got what, two weeks left and then we go on break?
Yeah, you have two weeks, but we still have about, uh, it's probably gonna stay hot and all the way until, uh, October.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, uh, so if we could do something before we leave on break, then maybe it's something you should, uh, bring back so we can talk about it.
Okay, absolutely, yes, I've talked to the captain about that already, put together plans, so we weren't sure it was in the budget, so if you guys want that, we'll bring it back.
Yeah, and then, you know, uh, uh, just to piggy, piggyback off what, uh, uh, Councilwoman Zerita said, when, you know, uh, uh, her niece was robbed, they went over there too. To, you know, in, in that area right there on, uh, Bullis Road, I was told during the election time, uh, when I was campaigning right there, that a lot of people have, uh, problems with people breaking into their cars. Right there on, on that street, um, across the street from the Walmart. And then also, uh, I think that they may have got it under control, but I also know that on Sunday, they had the, 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 uh, the, those, all the lowriders right there, and I know Walmart didn't like that. And I was under the impression they were gonna hire the sheriffs too, was, was the, I heard the issue was, uh, they were paying the sheriffs full-time to be there, but the sheriffs weren't being there full-time, so that's why they didn't do it. I don't know if you heard that or not, but that's something I heard.
No, just to verify.
Clarify it?
Yeah, the, the plan was, they put a substation in there, they wanted to deploy, uh, just like at the Gateway Town Center. Um, but the Sheriff's Department reminded them that if there are calls for service where there's like an emergency or something occurs where they need to leave that location, they have a right to do that. But they are anchored at that location if they pay for it. Um, I'm under the impression, Captain, I'm not sure if you can verify that Walmart's paying some overtime recently for the summer, uh, for the Sunday deployment. Uh, I know the last two Sundays, we put folks out there for the lowriding, uh, there's two groups of, uh, car enthusiasts that come there on Sundays. We haven't had major problems other than, uh, parking and, uh, the weed smoking and things like that in public and illegal vending. Um, one group they have spoken to on social media, the other group does not have a personal point of contact. So, um, I spoke to the mayor about that and, uh, we are, we have tried to reach out to at least one of the, uh, car enthusiast groups to maybe help facilitate them in some other fashion. But there hasn't been a positive response, at least of the last week or so, so, Captain.
Yes, last Sunday, we did have two deputies that, uh, were paid overtime to, to work the Walmart. Uh, we don't have, uh, in, in place right now a plan to pay for any deputies in the future, this Sunday or in the future.
But it should be Walmart that pays for them, right?
Yes.
They're doing really well over there, so they should, they should pay for it. But, uh, I, I was, uh, I was a little, they're paying for it, right, or the city?
The city paid for the two deputies last Sunday, yes, it's my understanding.
And Walmart's gonna reimburse the city?
Walmart should reimburse the city, when I spoke to the management, they were positive on that. Um, we also deployed some code enforcement officers, um, and to assist with the illegal vending.
Yeah, because I remember there was a fire in there one time too, and, uh, uh, there was a fire, somebody lit some clothes on fire or something and that shut down for a few days. And then now there's, they're robbing people in the back, so I think we have to do something about that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, also to, to the city manager again, um, we heard a lady, a resident today in my district complain about the potholes. But isn't that Walmart's job to fill them? Because it's inside their property, what she's talking about, it's before they get out and hit the street, it's actually in the, 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 the center. Or is it the city's job to repave it?
If it's on their property, they have to pave that.
It's not though.
But I'll take a, I'll take a look, we've, we've filled some potholes on Long Beach Boulevard. The one in particular that she's mentioning, I haven't actually gone out and seen, um, Louis McKenzie is our street superintendent and, uh, he will take a look at that. And I'll drive out there personally, take a look at it, but if it's on the property itself.
Maybe we can send him a letter for his, I think it's on the property.
Okay.
Because I drive by there like all the time to cut across to go to Looters Park, so I always drive by there. And I think it's actually, there's a lot of potholes on that hole, uh, thing though, especially on the other side that Walmart doesn't own, where the market's at and the shoe store and the nail place, that whole parking thing is tore up. Do we send like letters, letters for them to like fix it or something, or is there like any?
It's up to their property management folks, um, we can send them a letter to maintain their property, uh, with.
Are they violating the code by them not?
It's a violation of code to, uh, ma- they have to maintain their property in a safe manner.
Okay, all right, well, thanks for that, um, I don't think I'm, oh, I, I think I did mention the DeRosen camp already, I didn't, I didn't come to the last meeting, so. The DeRosen camp, I'll say it again, it was a great turnout when we had it, big shout out to, uh, Damar DeRosen, uh, the Compton, uh, Parks and Recs Department, all of the sponsors that made that event possible, all the kids that came out, all the parents. Um, it was a great event, so I wanted to make sure I brought that up. Um, want to remind the residents that, uh, we have the free meals program at, uh, all of our parks in Compton. Um, I know in my district, we do it at Looters and Wilson Park, and I'm sure they do it at Gonzalez and Burrell McDonald Park and all the other parks. So, uh, make sure you go, go out there and get your food, I believe it's from twelve to five o'clock. So if you're hungry, uh, and you're a child, make sure you go out there. Um, oh, today I got invited to attend, uh, the Compton High with, uh, our school board president, Satria Zerita. And we had, uh, our very own Richard Sherman right there doing, uh, an event with some of the Compton kids, the, the kids that, uh, did the robotics. And it was great out there, they made a machine that threw the ball and, uh, his job was to try to knock it down before it hit the target. So he was very impressed with, uh, how, how, um, clever our Compton kids were, you know, and they made a machine, they made it great, it was going like sixty miles an hour. The balls were shooting out like that, so it was a great experience and, uh, I want to thank her for, uh, having me, uh, for having me there as her guest and allowing me to witness it. Um, also, I, I read today in the paper that, uh, L A, uh, the city of L A was awarded the Olympics for either twenty-twenty-four or twenty-twenty-eight. So I was wondering if we could bring something back and, uh, send them a support letter so we can, uh, also partner up with them. So maybe we can, uh, host one of the Olympic Games here in Compton like we did many years ago. So I want to make sure we could bring something back before the, before we go on break and, uh, letting them know that we support them and we want to work with them. And hopefully, we can lure one of the events right here in Compton, that'd be pretty cool, right? We'll figure it out. Um, last thing, I'm having my, uh, backpack giveaway, uh, my fifth annual one. Can't believe I've done it this many times, but it's pretty cool. So we're gonna do it Saturday, August twelfth, at Looters Park, um, ten A M. to eleven, uh, I mean, sorry, ten A M. to one P M. We're gonna be giving free eye exams, eyeglasses to the kids that need them, free haircuts, uh, free food, free backpack stuff with school supplies. Uh, we're gonna be giving out Kindle notebooks, like the little tablets, to the first, uh, I think, thousand kids, so make sure you guys get there early. Um, it's gonna be a great event, uh, partnering with, uh, the Compton United School District and the president, Satria Zerita, as well as, um, let me tell you the names now because I don't want to mess it up. Uh, the W B C Cares is one of them, which is a nonprofit for the World Boxing Organization, they're also a part of it, and they're, um, donating some stuff. Um, let me see, sorry, there's, I want to make sure I mentioned the firm that's donating all the, all the tablets. I'll bring it back next week, uh, we'll still have two more weeks to promote it, so, uh, yeah, so it's gonna be a great event, I hope you guys all make it out. And, um, I think that's about it, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, mayor. Just to have a few announcements, first of all, um, I will be hosting the third district, um, sheriff's town hall meeting on Thursday, July thirteenth, from six to seven-thirty, Burrell McDonald Park. We will have, um, the city manager there, we'll have, um, someone from co- the new code enforcement manager, is that the code, new code enforcement manager? And of course Deputy Rayford Owens. So come out and join us on, um, Thursday. And then I will have, um, Mr. Hollyfield, we're gonna do a community, um, garden over at Tucker Park. And so the participation is free, the only cost is labor, so we need gardeners. So please come out and join me on July twenty-second, from ten A M. to two P M. Um, this is the, uh, community garden that we're gonna do, and then the children at the Key of Knowledge will. This is the community garden that we're gonna do, and then the children at the Key of Knowledge will be able to participate and plant some things that they can grow and take home. So I'm looking forward to this event. Tucker Park is located at five sixty West Laurel, and again, that's July twenty-second at ten AM. And then I am having my second annual Movie in the Park on Friday, August fourth, at five PM. We'll give away two hundred backpacks to the first two hundred, and the movie will be The Jungle Book. So please put this on your calendar, plan to join us, it's gonna be a great evening in the park. We're gonna have free popcorn, punch and hot dogs. So if you're interested, or if you want to actually make a donation, you can contact Vanita Alsonett at three one zero six zero five five six one two. Bring your chairs, your sleeping bag or blanket, and come on out and join us at the Movie in the Park. And then I have, a, actually, I was contacted by a young lady who is doing a City to Village International. And it is, it's, I am a reflection of my sister, I am my sister's keeper. And it's an international initiative where they're asking everyone to fill a reusable tote with items that they're gonna take back to Nigeria. So I'm going to ask the city manager to post it on the web, so that we can, everyone will have a list of all the things that they're asking. Just one reusable tote filled with items, and they're gonna take it back. The program goes until September sixteenth, and then this young lady is going to take these items back to Nigeria. So I am my sister's keeper, it's a beautiful activity that I think, and it's simple things, like two bars of soap, two things of antiperspirant, and a few other things. So I'm gonna give this to the city manager, and it'll be on the website. And if you have any more, need any more information, feel free to contact me at three one zero six zero five five six one two. Thank you. And then finally, I just want to adjourn in memory of Avino Willis, was, who was a longtime resident of the city of Compton. Comrade Willis passed away at his home on July the seventh. He was a twenty-year retiree of the United States Army and current post-quartermaster. So that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
The, actually, the two thousand seventeen inaugural was a wonderful event. I thank everyone who came out to participate, I thank everyone who helped put it together. I think the fact that the citizens had an opportunity to just join in and celebrate with us, and I look forward to getting together with you and doing some work now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I, two things, I had the papers turned down. For those of you that have not been to the grocery outlet, meet the woman behind Compton's first black-owned grocery store. And it's very exciting to see, she can barely keep the shelves stocked. I was in there yesterday, and she was working the cash register, so she's very personable, very excited and very overwhelmed. So if you haven't been, go by and check out the store. They have some really good phone cord, phone cord chargers up by the cash register. They're about four dollars, and I've had one of them for over five weeks and it's still working, so go get your phone cord. Compton's best-kept secret. And then on another note, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Kerwin, K E R W I N, Thomas Scott Junior. A nineteen-year-old young man who lived in Compton, born and raised. He was in a car accident. He passed away on Wednesday, July fifth, right after Fourth of July. He was, family lives in the first district of the city of Compton, and his services have not been arranged yet. So if it's before the next meeting, I'll make the announcement then. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Yes, ma'am.
Also, I am hosting the first. Compton Creek Task Force meeting on August second at eleven AM at City Hall and, and here in the community meeting room. And we will begin meeting monthly. This is the Compton Creek Task Force. This is the cleanup of the actual creek, so please, if you want to participate, come out and join us August second at eleven AM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, so I found the name of the company on my email, it's Stockcross Financial Services, which are donating the Kindle notebooks to our kids for my backpack giveaway. And then also, I wanted to wish Ms. Postow a happy birthday as well. You know, she's a nice lady, lives here in the community, serves on our commission, want to wish her a happy birthday. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was the marijuana stuff that people were coming up here outraged about, about signing the petition and stuff. And I kind of agree too, you know, it's a business, people make millions of dollars with their shops and stuff like that. And then they want to come and make money in Compton, so, I mean, they're going out there getting signatures and I, from the rumors, you know, going around the city, they already have thousands of them and stuff. And then with the low turnout in elections that we have in the city of Compton, they're probably gonna need two, three thousand votes maybe to pass it. And I just want to encourage the residents, if you're so outraged about people going to your doors and signing the paper, I mean, nobody's forcing you to sign it. And you shouldn't sign nothing without reading it first. But if it does get on the ballot, make sure you go out there and vote. I mean, I've read the, the ordinance and they're clearly, clearly taking advantage of the residents of Compton with the percentage they want to put to give back to the city and stuff. And so I think that it's important for us as policymakers to, you know, do something about this and, you know, bring the item back to talk about it and stuff. You know, so we can make sure that if it does go through, we get our fair share, and we don't let these people that don't even live in the city of Compton, that are, you know, making millions of dollars, come over here and just take advantage of us. They were, the group that's doing it was successful in LA, they were successful in Long Beach, where the people vote more than they do over here. So, you know, that's all I want to say. And then also too, you know, it's, it's funny how people come over here so outraged about somebody going to their door and asking them to sign a petition, when they have every right to say no and close the door. But yeah, nobody comes up here and talks about all the dispensaries that are still open. I mean, nobody's getting rallying up and trying to shut those down. I mean, it's the city attorney's job, or I don't know whose job it is, but I've brought it up several times right here, that why the heck are these guys still open? It's, it's, it's amazing to me that, I don't know why, in any other city, this doesn't happen. For some reason, I don't know why, we can't shut them down in Compton. I mean, the guys are making thousands of dollars a day on the stores. I mean, we have a list where everyone's at, and they're still open. It's unbelievable. But, there you go. So I just wanted to get that off my chest, and that's all.
I can say that every city that I follow and talk with, and if anyone has, uses technology, you can actually, there's an app where you can actually see exactly where the open dispensaries are. And every single city has illegal dispensaries, including Paramount, and they have a ban as well. So knowledge is power, you all can actually see what's happening, and I'm just gonna request another update from the city attorney. Madam City Attorney, if we can have a, a total to-date number of dispensaries that have been shut down, and which dispensaries are still shut down? Because I know that the council did approve a change in the code that is allowing us to be able to condemn those buildings. And if they're inoperable, if we could, that could be discussed as well.
And you know, Mayor, to, to piggyback off your statement too, it, it's, it's not, I don't want to use the word funny, but it's, people come and they say, we don't want marijuana in Compton. Marijuana's been here, we have over forty stores. They're here already, they're making maybe millions of dollars a year, they're operating. Nobody's shutting them down, and we're not getting a single dime from them, a single dime. So instead of being so outraged, if we don't want marijuana, we should say we want our cut of it, or we want to make sure we do things the right way, so it's safe. So you know what I'm saying? Like we have forty, we had, last time we had what, forty stores, Mr. City Manager?
Just under forty. We have a list, and we have shut down, just off the top of my head, five. And of the five, yeah, actually in the last sixty days. But of the five, most of them have remained closed. They do reopen in violation of the law, and even the rest, the landlords have had problems when they come back and reopen, and the Sheriff's Department has gone out, made arrests, taken guns, seized property. They're very, very persistent.
Yeah, and then they, they know like the loopholes to get around it, right, and to delay it and stuff?
The problem is, in California, marijuana possession is, is a misdemeanor. It's, it's, it's really not being aggressively prosecuted. Where you're gonna get some, some real teeth is when you have perhaps the Internal Revenue Service come in and take them down. Because co-op, co-op weed spots are not supposed to make a profit, but clearly, these locations are making a profit.
But you said marijuana, you said marijuana possession is a misdemeanor. What about selling marijuana? Is that a misdemeanor too?
So when they have, part of that is a dispensary issue, right? So when we talk to the district attorney's office, it's, it's very hard to, to get them as a criminal enterprise, because they claim to be co-ops. So it's very hard to prove that they're not doing that. We have to seize their computers, look at their bank records, I mean, it takes a forensic investigation. But on the face of it, once we go in and shut them down, and they go back and reopen, the Sheriff's Department is, has stepped up their aggression with the cooperation of the district attorney's office. And gone in and, and taken folks to jail, very recently actually. People with weapons, marijuana, money that gets seized, which by the way, has to wind its way through the court. I know there was a comment from the audience, when the money is seized, it gets, it has to be wound through the court system and adjudicated through the asset forfeiture process. Before we can even take possession of it and use it for law enforcement or other services. Thanks, sir.
I'm going to also request that we, in response to the request from the residents, hold a public information town hall regarding, to really explain the initiative. So that people have an opportunity to discuss, weigh in, and then also that we invite the petitioners to actually come forward, so that we can see who those people are. And also be able to voice the concerns that we have regarding misinformation being presented at the doors to the residents, and be able to go from there. Because from what I've heard, there are thousands of signatures already gathered, and they're probably more than halfway finished. And so I'm going to estimate that this item probably will be on the upcoming election or whatever their schedule is. So we can just start having a discussion about what this means for Compton. So.
Well, Madam Mayor, I know that with, if they're getting the signatures illegally, there is something that governs them for using, using false information when they're out at doors. And they're saying illegal things, so that is something that we could probably talk about at that town hall, to see what we can do to actually get that whole thing kicked out.
And we'll invite a representative from Consumer Affairs, which they're actually located here now in Compton, with, at Neighborhood Housing Services. And they actually can come and help to shed some light on what the process is, as well as, of course, our city attorney and our clerk. I will request for them to be in attendance, but we'll get some dates together. I'll work with you tomorrow to confirm a date.
And, and maybe we can, we maybe want to consider having our own election. If the measure makes it so, it won't. It'll be just city, citywide election, and it won't go out to county residents.
I don't think that it would.
Well, we don't want the same case like Measure P, where they said, said county residents.
Well, they can say that, right.
Got it, and shouldn't have gotten it. Because I, I think that's what's being contested about Measure P. I have not read the legal document myself. But if, since so many people are talking about outsiders coming in and taking over our city, maybe we should think about holding our own election.
I don't know, I don't know if that's up to the council or the petition. I think there's election law that governs when the election has to be called. I think if they turn it in by a certain date, then if, they, we have to by law call a election between a certain window or. I, I spoke with the clerk just to find out whether or not they dictate it, because I think it's a hundred and twenty days, once the petition has been certified by the clerk. So I don't even know if we make the November election, I just, I'm just assuming the next election, it may be a special election. So we'll, we'll get all that information and have that ready for a town hall, and figure out what our options are.
But the absolute worst part of, I'm not sure we should have the election, but the worst part of it is, if they get the signatures, then what's on the election is their proposal, which, we get five percent? Ridiculous.
Well, I mean, and that's what happens when other folks dictate, you know, our own policy, we wait for them to do that. But moving forward.
Yeah, but it, it ain't over until the people vote, because you can still, even if the, the petition is successful and put on the ballot. I'd like to really see the actual legal opinion as to what election that it has to go on. Because we, as a council and policymakers, as you said, if, if it does make it, and as aggressively as they are walking, I, I'm almost ninety percent sure that it will make it. And we should think about having our own election and creating our own policy.
Well, we're saying the same thing, I, I don't disagree with you, I just, based on what, I understand a lot of people, we'll get a legal opinion, and we can go from there. Moving forward, inauguration, community celebration, thank you all, to everyone that attended, that was able to participate in us celebrating our service to the residents of Compton. Big congratulations to Councilwoman Galvane for your reelection, Councilwoman McCoy for your election. And also to my colleagues, which are not here on tonight, for their election as well. And it was a beautiful ceremony, but it was hot, and I want to request that we look at our system, because there's an issue if we go into the community center and it's really cold, if there are only a few people in there. But then, once the maximum capacity, which is by fire code, are actually in there, the room temperature obviously increases and it becomes unbearable. So we probably need to get a different load for the air conditioner, and a space that big probably should have two different systems, because there is a partition. So we should be able actually to have two air conditioners in that room. It's such a beautiful building, I think Councilwoman Zerita said it during the ceremony, it's beautiful, state-of-the-art facility, but the air conditioner doesn't work, so that's a no-go.
And I can already ask the city manager about that, because you know, we're listed as a cooling center during these heated days for LA County. And it's a heat, it's a cooling center for seniors, for people who don't have air. So we need to make sure, yeah, we need to make sure that the air is working, because you know, we're sending people to a building that's not cool.
Thank you.
And Asia too, maybe, other thing we could consider too, and I, I mentioned to the city manager, is maybe getting a tarp for outside, you know, we have that outdoor area where we have the food, so we can block the sun. I think I mentioned to you, to Cecil.
Sounds great. And then also, a big thank you to all the city staff, all the liaisons actually worked to put the event together, and everyone worked together really well. And a big thank you to all the local vendors that participated. We made sure we worked with all Compton small businesses, and everything was really beautiful and delicious. So a big thank you to everyone that came to support and participate. I'm going to actually have a quick save the date. We are launching our Compton Open Mic Night under our Arts and Culture Initiative, and we have some awesome people from Compton that are going to be helping us host this event. And the kickoff is Thursday, July twenty-seventh, from eight to ten PM at Dollar High, doors open at seven o'clock. And that's, information is posted, actually it'll be posted by tomorrow on the city's website, but everything is free. And you can actually check out the flyer online now, if you go to CPTopenmic eventbrite.com. And it'll be on all the social media accounts as well, and we'll get that information out, and we'll keep promoting it. And a big thank you to all the people that are working to make that happen. And congratulations to all the college graduates, we have some graduates from Compton, people are sending their notifications to our office. So just want to congratulate everyone on their achievements. And I have a couple constituent concerns. One is that with the onset of summer, it seems that the number of solicitors for prostitutes have greatly multiplied. So we're seeing more people trying to pick up human trafficker victims, victims on Long Beach Boulevard. And it, from a resident, according to them, it's apparent that the supply of human trafficking victims is bringing in customers that would not otherwise visit the city. And so they said the favorite pickup spot is in front of KFC, which is on the corner of Laurel and Long Beach Boulevard. And I'm just going to request that we get a report back of our human trafficking unit, I know we have a special detail there, and to figure out if we can add some additional enforcement services as we're looking at safety for the rest of the summer. Also, there are just some giant crater potholes and on, located off of the freeway entrances and exits, which is just really dangerous for traffic, which is, look at Artesia Central and Victoria. And I'm just asking that we fill those, because a lot of people traffic those areas, and they're trying to divert and miss those potholes, and it's just a dangerous situation. Also, I, I'm still witnessing just excessive graffiti around the city, and I don't. Also, I I'm still witnessing just excessive graffiti around the city, and I don't know if if we can just get a report back from our graffiti contractor, if they feel that more graffiti has picked up, or if we need to have an additional company, or if they need to expand their services, what do we need to do to address the graffiti, because it's getting out of hand? And I'm even seeing graffiti on the, just adjacent to us, right in front of the Chevron Station on Compton Boulevard and Willbrook, on the actual Chevron Station. I've never seen graffiti there before. And I've been walking different areas in the city early morning and just taking photos. And um it's, it's really getting out of hand with the graffiti. And the same, as I'm talking about graffiti and trash, the MLK area, the Civic Center area is just disgusting, really. And I've discussed this before, that we need to have a maintenance schedule. And I'm requesting for the full maintenance schedule for all of our public spaces, our medians by Tuesday. I requested this. My last notes had me requesting this back in May again, and before then, we requested this, and actually, I have May there. Um, but we need to be able to have an idea, because even walking around the Civic Center area, there just needs to be an additional trash can. There's just, I I'm gonna actually set up a tour. Because I think we all need to just get on the ground and and check this out together so we can remedy what's going on here. Um, but I'll have more reports on that. Councilwoman Galvane mentioned connecting with the city of LA and the Olympics, and I just want to give a update. We've been in conversations with LA eighty-four about connecting Compton to the Olympic Games, and I have another conference call tomorrow morning, and I'll report out at the next council meeting, as well as to my colleagues, um, what the outcomes are, but we're looking at um different games for young people, and then also some other opportunities, so I'll definitely report out to the community and to the council. Lastly, um, street sweeping services. I I still I follow street sweepers. Um, I see them, you know, every week or so, and I still don't see them using water to sweep the street. And I just think that that is a a huge issue, if they are not using water to clean the streets. If we're not using water, I don't know what we're doing, because we're not cleaning our streets. We're just barely sweeping them up, and we need that water. We need pressure washing. Number one, in public spaces, but we also need the street sweepers to use water, so I need to know whether or not those trucks are equipped with water or even capable of using water, because I've never seen a street sweeper in Compton use water. So I I'd like to get an answer to that if we could by next week. Lastly. We will close in the memory of Avino Willis and Kerwin Thomas Scott Junior. May we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.